One in the past is we, if a child is within two miles of another school, we have moved some students to another school. There's a couple of things we keep in mind. One is, we don't move a child if they've already got a sibling at their home school. But two, we are also careful not to move a child to a school where they're going to go to the opposite middle school. So, we, you know, so for example, and this isn't the case this year, but if we were going to move some students from Barrows, outside of Barrows, it would be better to move them to Eaton and not Birch Meadow because Birch Meadow goes to Coolidge, Barrows goes, Eaton goes to Parker.
Okay.
And Barrows is a Parker district.
Thank you.
All set? Let's go.
So that might've been.
Sure.
So, I want to thank Kelly Cologne, the facilities director, because she had a lot of input into this and she unfortunately couldn't be here tonight because of child care. But she met with Joe Huggins and George Zamboros today, and George was extremely helpful. He provided her detailed site plans that showed where she would be able to tie, where we'd potentially be able to tie in to utilities and water and other things that we would need, as well as giving us some historical information of where things were previously. So both of them were very helpful. And as I think Dr. Dory mentioned, we are going to be having a meeting next week with the various stakeholders, the police, the fire, to look at other issues that we might have missed. So, the goals of this is to increase classroom capacity at three elementary sites. Options include four to six classrooms. I don't think this one is in there. Did you get it, help me?
It's wrong.
Okay. Obviously, the three schools that we're talking about that are impacted are Barrows and Killam. A maximum of two modular classrooms at those sites is the maximum. This, I don't know if you can see it or not, the site plan for Barrows, you might be able to see it better when I hand out, but we're thinking, and we still have to do a feasibility study to see if this is where it could go, but this is where we're thinking they could potentially be positioned. We do need to reach out to AI3. They did considerable work for us on a number of projects, so they already have a lot of knowledge about our district. And we think that they would have, they'd be able to provide us some site survey information and other support information that we would need to know where we can put things.
So if I might interrupt you?
Sure.
And I was, my kids were at Birch Meadows, so I'm not as familiar with Barrows. But it's my understanding that there were a portable or two? There were two portables at the Barrows site. Is this putting them back in the same place?
Not necessarily. One of the things that we've learned over the course of the last few days is that there have been changes in code on where things can go, and the fire chief actually brought to our point today that how close they can be to buildings has changed based on the combustibility of the walls. So, there is definitely more due diligence for us to do in terms of where they can actually be placed.
Excuse me, go ahead, Dr.
No, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I was simply going to say, for a frame of reference, in the general area as they used to be?
No. What, it seems like in the past with the old modulators from several years ago is that the codes were much more, well, not relaxed, but they were different. And so, what seems logical to do now, and you'll see at Joshua Eaton, there was, you know, you could do, there is actually still, you can see where the modular used to be. That may not be as feasible a location anymore because you have to have it so many feet away from the building, or becomes a sprinkled modular classroom. So, there's a lot of new factors that have come in place with the code since, I don't know, ten years ago when we had modular classrooms in the district.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Oops. There you go. Should've clicked.
Oh, that's all right.
So, there's where, I was pointing in the wrong place. So, there's where we're considering putting them. We're going to do obviously more investigatory work. With Eaton, there are a number of different options on where they can go, sorry, on where they can go at the Eaton site. Again, some of this has to do with where's, where, the ease of tying in to utilities and easement issues and.
If you might hold, are there questions at placement? Mrs. Brodsky.
Thank you. I'm glad you asked. Actually, back to Barrows just briefly. I know this is really, really early goings, but that would probably impact the area where students exit and enter the school and have outdoor recess time. I mean, have you, I know you're just beginning to think about this, but have you thought through the impact there? Or do we, is it just too soon to?
We've, we've had some conversations with Mrs. Leonard about it. I think what's going to, unfortunately, what's going to impact a lot of the decisions if we move forward is where we, from a code perspective and a conservation perspective, can place these modular classrooms. With Barrows, what we're being told right now, and again, we have not had an architect involved, we're being told right now is that this is probably the only location you can have these modulators. We were thinking of over behind that parking lot. My understanding today, and it was confirmed, there are wetlands there, and it would be very difficult for conservation to approve putting modulators in that location.
That's a hill.
Yeah.
There's no water anywhere there.
Right there.
That's not what we were told.
Yeah. Well.
Mr. Robinson has stated that that is dry land, but.
And I would agree with Mr. Robinson. Haven't been there many years.
If there are questions, I'll kind of do that, and I'll ask if you guys have questions as we go, if the audience has questions. But please continue.
So, as I said earlier, Eaton, there are a number of different options at Eaton that we're pursuing, and again, these are all just options at this point. We haven't, you know, not moving forward with any of them until we do some feasibility and site service studies.
It would seem, and I know way early, it would seem that the left side of the school option, in my opinion, in my uninformed opinion, is that that would be the nicer location if we could. So, I don't, as you guys are doing this, just remember, Mr. Caruso said, but I do think that that would be less impactful on the parking and the other activities that go on in that school. Mrs. Doctor.
In these locations, are you talking about two modulators being placed in each of those ovals?
Doubles.
Or are you talking about two out of three of those circles are going to be modules?
I believe the plan is two in both of those locations so that they're neck, they're closer to each other to, to get economies of scale with the utility tie-ins and site preparation.
Yeah. They're close.
No.
For Killam, the most obvious option right now is to the left of the school. But we do need to do some more investigation there with code in terms of how close can we be to the property line and things like that, so.
One of the things we were told today is we could not do it in the back.
Good.
There's going to be some extensive field work being done there in the future.
Good. I mean, that field is used, right?
Right.
If, if it could go where you're highlighting, that, that would be wonderful, but I am concerned at how close it is to the property line with that neighbor right next door, so.
Yes.
So, maybe George has this information too, but I am thinking about the zoning, all the stuff we've just done at town meeting on the zoning, and there was a lot of discussion and change on like accessory structures. So, I would, don't know if it falls under that, but I would think, oh god, Jean.
Jean was there.
Miss Partick.
And she'll be at the meeting next week.
Okay. Okay, good. Because I think you, there's a lot of different, really critical pieces about the actual ability to locate in a physical spot that.
Yeah. This is, what we were told today is Killam is probably going to be the most challenging location, even though it seems like, well, we've got all this land, but.
Yeah, because on, on the site survey that we were looking at today, it had a 30-foot zone on each side of the property, but only 15 foot down here at Abel Street. So, it does appear that we might need to look at zoning if that's where they're going to end up. But again, it's early.
Mrs. Webb?
So, I wonder then also if that means, you know, just other options and probably the architect or, you know, as you do the feasibility, would know if you have to locate the modulators closer to the building, it's probably a more costly modular, whether it's sprinkles or other things, so.
You'd also, if you connect it to the building, it kicks in code for the building.
Oh, ADA.
You have to, you have to, no, it kicks in the sprinkler code.
Oh, for the build, the whole building.
Killam is not a fully sprinkled building, so we would have to upgrade that as well, which would add another cost to this.
Mrs. Doctor.
Looking at this and my knowledge of Killam, I'm thinking about access to the building for the children in those modulators, and if they were to go in the doorway that's right across from where that's located, they would have to go through a classroom to get into the school. I'm assuming that they will consider those.
Yeah. Again, these are the types of things an architect will do in a feasibility study. So, we're only showing you potentially where things could go. The architect may say, oh, no, no, you could put it here.
Dr. Dory, if you show us pictures, we're going to comment.
Right.
There's no stopping us. Mr. Robinson?
And to that point, I think, you know, whoever said that the field is off limits, we need to discuss that again, too. That's a big field. We're not talking about putting a, you know, big building back there.
I would think, you know, obviously, we wouldn't want to put it in the middle of the field, but, you know, to the left or above, where that left side of the school is, above, I believe that's where the previous portal, portable was.
Yeah, that's the play structure.
I thought the portable was in here.
They were, yeah, they were.
Yeah, which we know right now that that would not, that we can't do.
That we can't do because of the new code.
Yeah. There you are.
So, that was where some of our assumptions where we could put them, where they were for, are not accurate.
Oh, in the courtyard.
Oh, that's not going to happen.
In the middle of the field.
In the middle of the field. Wow. This was, yes, it's an option. There's land there.
Because drop-off isn't already a nightmare, right?
No, it's not. So.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Continue.
So, in terms of estimated costs, there were two avenues that we were pursuing. One was to purchase them outright, and another was to own option? So, purchasing them outright, I tried to organize this as streamlined as I could. So, in the four classroom scenario, where there's two at Barrows, one at Eaton and one at Killam, each modular classroom being 900 square feet, we would increase our capacity by 3,600 feet for an estimated cost of $435,000. That's $121 for a square foot. And as Dr. Dory stated, those four classrooms, that would get us to 2,019, in terms of, you know, short-term needs. We have reached out to AI3, who have done previous site work for us to kind of let us know where, where those four potential classrooms would go. The next cost, and so this is kind of extrapolated for the five classes and six classrooms. So, with five classrooms, we gain 4,500 square feet of classroom space and 5,400 square feet with six.
Six fifty-three.
Where you're going to have some economies of scale is your site preparation. We're estimating about $2,500. Oh, I'm sorry. Did I make a mistake? That's not supposed to be 250,000. That's supposed to be, that's not supposed to be 75,000.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, well, so sorry. I apologize. This cost is supposed to be 75,000 each, not 225,000. Yeah, we estimated 25,000 per site, and I apologize for my rush. I must've typed over something inadvertently. The architectural services, we're estimating right now at 35,000. Again, that would be for the whole project, whether we do four, five, or six. Our furniture and fixtures and equipment, we're estimating 25,000 per classroom. So, at four classrooms, it's 100,000, 125, or 150. I'm wondering if my subtitles are off. Yeah, I apologize. I factored in a 5% contingency, and those are the bottom lines. For the estimated lease to own, this is a little more, I was trying to show this in a year than that. So, the lease.
Yeah, you should go back.
Yeah.
So, to the bottom numbers, I can't.
I know, that's a.
Do those, do those add up to? These windows do have some clicking where.
I just super quickly did it, and I don't, I think the bottom line number should be shorter than that amount, but I did it really quick. It is shorter than that amount. Good. Thank you for reminding. 435 plus 75 plus 30. Yeah. Yeah, it's 645. So, I apologize. I can update this, obviously, when we send it out. So, it is significantly different, and unfortunately, this error is going to pull into my next slides because I pulled these numbers.
That's why.
The architectural services, I mean, we're like an annuity for AI3. Haven't they done enough work already to?
This is a very high estimate. We reached out to AI3 today, and we haven't had an opportunity to superfin, so I wanted to be more conservative.
Yeah, all of these are estimates. We feel that we will be able to get it for a much lower cost to get a site plan, probably sooner than later, because they have so much data already.
Right.
That they have done on the elementary schools over the last year or so. So, but this would be more for the, if town meeting approves it, that piece of the architectural services is what we're talking about.
On the estimated cost lease to own, I broke it out by year. So, the cost changes on the purchase is $121 per square foot. On the lease to own, it equates to about $133 per square foot. So, that's your cost of capital, a 9% increase in our cost per square foot on the cost of lease to own.
The advantage of lease to own is it spreads out the amount over five years instead of taking it all at once out of the, wherever the source would be.
Yeah. And as you can see, I have the wrong site work number carried forward in each scenario, so it's apples to apples when you're looking at that.
Total would be 150,000.
Less, yes. So, that, yeah, as Mr. Martin pointed out, the total will be 150,000 less. So, here's your incremental lease to own cost versus purchasing them outright.
Question?
So, on this slide, the difference in the incremental cost of the lease option is it'll be 150,000 higher in each case?
No, it's 150,000 less. I have, I have 150,000 error in both options.
But the difference is the difference, the difference is the difference, but like that 1.193 is, you need to subtract 150.
Yeah.
Whether from both.
Yes.
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 Okay. So, it'll be the same.
Yeah. So, the difference between the two is still the same number.
Other questions? Ms. Rob.
With these prices, are they predicated on a particular vendor that sells these, or are these just estimates?
Well, right now, this, this purchase, because we're not bundling it to be site preparation and delivery from the vendor, we can use two different laws to do the procurement. So, the actual procurement of the modular classrooms will come under 30B, and that we would not have to bear because there is a bid consortium out there we could buy from that does follow mass general law when it comes to 30B procurement. So, there, there's a vendor there that we could use, and that's 121. We have been watching, talking to another vendor as well, and the pricing is very comparable, so, which is reassuring to us that we're not being gouged by one vendor just because he's on a business.
No, I was, I was just going to add, one of the things that we have included in here, we've made an assumption, and I think it's going to be valid, that we're not going to be able to use DPW for any site prep work because they're going to be fairly busy with the West Street project. We were told that today. So, what you see in here is if we're hiring someone from the outside to do all the site prep work.
Sure. Mr. Robinson, if I, if I could continue with your, were you thinking, hey, are there different models of modular classrooms that we should?
No, I wasn't, actually, my, I had a follow-up question. So, we've been talking about, you can't run to the town.
Oh, Sutton.
Sutton that potentially had.
Twelve.
That would have. Are these, those, or the?
No, no, these are brand new. Sutton's are three years old, but they are going to go out to auction, and they haven't, they haven't gone out yet.
They're going to date on them, they're going to do it.
Yeah.
So, we have that information for the 21st?
The auction?
Whether, yeah, I mean, that's something.
So, we could certainly, we could certainly ask them if they have a timeline.
That actually is related to my question that, and I asked this last time about if, if we have a window that we are committing to using these modulators for, and our long-term space needs committee is coming up with a longer-term solution, what is the market for these, build, these modular buildings after we've used it for six years? Is it still auctionable or resellable? And what kind of, I think town meeting will want to know what we can recoup.
Sure.
In six years from what they spend now, we've spent.
You know, I'm not sure what the depreciated value of them would be six years out from now, but I certainly can do some research to try and reasonably determine them.
It is worth mentioning that, depending on your definition of short-term, long-term, we are looking at this as a five-year-plus solution. So, this does give the town, the space needs committee, this gives everyone involved enough breathing room to solve it permanently, if you want to use that word. But this isn't a short-term, get us through the next 18 months. This is a five-year-plus minimum solution. Just make sure we're all clear on that. Mrs. Brodsky.
Following along with that, what's the lifespan of one of these structures?
I believe 10 years or at least.
I'd say it's at least 10 years.
It's at least 10.
Yeah, I'd say it's at least 10.
In our conversations to date, it has been at least 10-year minimum on the lifespan of these.
Assuming you don't move them too many times. Because every time you move them, it does affect the structural integrity.
If they're nice enough, they'll move to my backyard and other than that.
Your kids will stare it up. I just wanted to reiterate that I'm looking at this as a short, as in five, six kind of year, because I did call to be able to go visit North Andover's modulators, and I made the mistake of calling the wrong school. And when I called them, the secretary called me back and said, the teachers suggested that I should call you back because our modulators are 20 years old, and they found it very hard to believe that you would want to see them because they're 20 years old, and probably what you wanted to see was the newer ones at the early childhood center, which are close by.
Yes.
And so, my point is that I don't want in 20 years for us to be saying, you really don't want to see our 20-year-old modulators. You want to see our long-term solution to this space issue.
Mrs. Webb?
So, I, in light of that, I think one of the reasons it's important that we're looking at that timeframe is because I think as a community, we have, you know, operational budget issues that are paramount, and I think as a community for the schools and the town, those are things that we're going to need to address. And so, by, you know, looking at this as a solution, that, that will be sort of a minimum five-year and maybe a 10-year view, I think it allows, you know, us to serve the needs of the students that are here in our district right now, today, that would like to be a part of the district, but also allows us the opportunity to address the operational issues so that we can serve the kids that are in our district currently in, in a manner that's closer to, to maybe some of the things that we would like to do. So, I think for that reason, you know, this is important, and doesn't mean that the work that the space group, I think, this, the, that was a bad way to say it, but they want to, that work is important in terms of that, you know, next phase, you know, when we're maybe a few years already into an override.
Mrs. Brodsky.
I actually want to piggyback on exactly what Mrs. Webb just said. Another benefit for the long-term space group is we've been working under a, the sooner we can solve this problem, the better, and that actually limits your choices. Now, we could be talking about what would a solution look like in five years, and maybe the ideal solution is seven or eight years or 10 years away, but now we have 10 years to plan for it and a reasonable interim. So, I do like that it offers multiple options that we don't currently have. And I did have one question as well.
Of course.
It has to do with safety.
Oh, sure.
I hate that in this day and age we have to ask these questions, but in the age of Alice drills, what kind of safety mechanisms? I assume the doors lock automatically behind you. I mean, what kind of safety do these provide?
Honestly, we haven't really explored that with the vendor, but.
I think those, that's a very.
And if you could add that to the list of things you're looking at, I'd like to hear a little more information about, you know, in the event of a crisis, where do the students go in the classroom? How protected are they? Thank you.
I do believe that they're, if they're connected to the building enough in such that like when the morning announcements are made, they're going to hear them in the classrooms as well, so there is.
No, there will be, yes, there'll definitely be.
In terms of the utility tie-in and the connectivity to the building.
Right.
I'm more.
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, I'm talking in an absolute crisis, and the kids need to be protected in that moment. How are these structures designed? I'm quite sure they are because they're modular classrooms for students, but I feel, I'd like to hear more about it.
Thank you very much. That's a great question.
I did want to just close with one other thing. So, when I was speaking with one of the vendors today, he did suggest if we are looking at this option, that in his experience, a lot of districts come back within three to five years and add on and add more, and you end up paying more for it five years from now because the costs have gone up and sites, so. And he did point out that right now the pricing is very good because some of the transportation costs are very low due to gas. So, there are benefits to, to have to own it at this point in time.
Nice sales pitch there at the end.
So, in fact, if we did go with six, would we be solving the art and music classroom?
Yes, the six, the six one, the one for Killam, the excellent Killam, the goal would be to be able to restore.
So, if, if we went with six, what I would envision would happen is the smaller room at Barrows could be captured as the music room again. You would be able to take music off the stage at Eaton until 2019, 20, and then you could take music off the stage at Killam. So, yes.
So, currently, those are the places.
Those are the three, because Wood End and Birch Meadows still have their own.
Because I'll go back to what Chuck said. As a town meeting member, I remember distinctly when we put in, you know, Wood End, that this would solve the problem with art and the cart and music in the stage, and so, that's the one concern I have about all this, that we did really make a promise. So, I'd really like to be able to go back and say, you know, this is going to.
Yeah, we'll be, we'll be able to do that.
However, and I agree completely, but I might add that when we talked about Wood End, and I wasn't on the committee that long ago, but when we talked about that and we talked about music and art in classrooms, that was before the explosion and the realization of full-day kindergarten being so important, and that was before a lot of development was done in town. So, I, I hope the community knows that we certainly want music and art in classrooms, and it's not our intention to keep coming back and saying, you know, if you give us this, we'll give you art and music. Do you know what I'm trying to say?
Yeah, I hear you, but I do, I do remember last year, too, that at town meeting, you know, not that I agree with it, but the sentiment from some town meeting members that this was a self-created problem by.
Certainly.
By continuing to add full-day kindergarten. Again, I'm a complete advocate for free full-day kindergarten, but, and the need for it, but I do recall that being a response that we have to be able to address, and.
I agree with that. I agree with that. Mrs. Brodsky.
Just another quick point. I'd be thrilled to be able to recapture those art and music classrooms, thrilled, but another benefit of this is that in the event that there's a population bubble one year.
And you have that going.
And again, nobody wants to give up the art and music classrooms, but right now at several of our schools, there's a popul, and we found that this year at Eaton, there's a population bubble. There's no art or music classroom, there's nothing to be done.
Yeah.
By, by expanding those art and music protections, it's actually insurance pop, an insurance policy against population bubbles, which, which I think is important.
I, I, I might offer, I agree, however, I really do want to see what two modular classrooms look like at those sites because they already look tight. I mean, we're already concerned about where they're going to go, so I get it.
Absolutely.
My opinion would be to move forward and investigate six, absolutely, but I would want to hold final judgment until we actually know what they're going to look like on those sites.
Some of the thought process here.
Could you, I'm sorry, sorry. Could you state your name?
Pete Terrell.
Thank you.
Does some of the thought process here that is going to be dedicated full-day classes and dedicated half-day classes, are they still going to be combined?
Are they still going to be integrated?
Yeah.
Dr. Doherty.
I think it's going to depend on the half-day numbers. If you have very low half-day numbers, you can't have a half-day class of six to nine kids.
Okay, so some of the concern is that my son's in full day now at Eaton, and there's twenty-four kids in the class, five of them are half-day. And when they leave, they're not allowed to teach anything new. They just refresh what was going on in the morning.
Well, I, yeah, I don't, I.
That's my.
Yeah, I think that's a different conversation because I don't think that's exactly what's entirely happening. There's other things going on, but.
It's a good question moving forward though, and we can get the answer to what the mix would be between full versus an integrated versus half. We can certainly, we can certainly get that.
Yeah, I can't, I can't guarantee each year how many families want half-day, but I also can't have a half-day classroom of ten kids.
Correct.
You know, so that's where the integrated plays out. And this year, we didn't have a choice at Eaton because we didn't have any more classroom space.
It was a comment, not a question. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for the question, sir. Mrs. Webb, you had your hand up first.
Yeah, I guess I just wanted to comment sort of to John, the, as we go to, well, finance committee and financial forum, and then in preparation for town meeting, I think we just need to make sure that we're really, we have the information and we're cognizant that the town meeting especially is, you know, going to say, "Well, remember what we did the last time we did these building projects and, you know, sort of here's what we signed up for." And I know at the end of town meeting a few nights ago, people were, after your report, right, already accosting school committee members about, you know, the Barrows project was supposed to do X, Y, and Z. So I think we just need to make sure that we're also, we have the information to show how the current space, you know, here's the current space that's in the classrooms. It's being fully utilized. And I think in line with the, you know, this is a problem that we made, in some ways, I think we have to, I think we have to sort of proudly say, "Yeah, this is a problem that we made because we have a good school district. People want to be here. People want full-day K. We want to continue to add programs, whether it's at the middle school level, the high school level, the elementary level." And that takes space. You know, do we want to not do project lead the way here at the high school? We'd have more classrooms. So I think, you know, it's a, that's, the fact that we're, we're growing, we're adding things programmatically, we have to just make sure we convey that point to town meeting. It's not like we've, we're, I don't know, somehow wasting or not utilizing space that we have.
I think it's, I think it's also the importance of full-day kindergarten. And I think that's what's lost in this translation is yes, the demand and the need is definitely up.
Right.
But, you know, if we were able to, we would want all our children to have full-day kindergarten because educationally, that's what's best for kids. And I think we, you know, we lose that in the translation. And I think the families that want full-day kindergarten, that's one of their reasons as well.
Right, right.
Mrs. Doherty.
I have a question related to that. Some, some families want half-day kindergarten and some want full-day kindergarten. And I understand that there are some that actually want full-day, I'm sorry, actually want half-day kindergarten because of their situations and because maybe there's a stay-home parent or relatives or whatever, that's their choice. And I understand how that can be really beneficial when kids did it. One of my, my question is that sometimes in contrast to that, people choose half-day kindergarten because they're on free and reduced lunch or they can't afford a full-day kindergarten program. And my question is whether we've looked at our numbers to see if the majority of those choosing or what percentage of those choosing the half-day kindergarten program might be because they don't have another option and whether the state might have, or whether there is any help out there for those who can't afford the tuition of a full-day.
There is no state or federal help for students.
And do we have?
But we do have, we do have tuition relief. They have to qualify for it. We don't know next year's kindergarten population yet if they're on free and reduced lunch.
But do people, are people aware that they can ask about that should their decision be because they don't think they can afford it?
Yes, they do.
Yes, they are aware.
Thank you.
It is made clear to them during the registration process.
One quick follow-up, Dr. Doherty. It would be interesting to see if we went with a six modular solution, it would be interesting to see, is there room for the sixty-nine half-day students if we were to offer? If there was some sort of a discussion that the school committee had that said, "We are, we're not going to offer a half-day. We're going to only offer full-day and we'll figure out the tuition for those families that can't afford it."
The projection that I did assumed historical.
Right.
Which means assuming that all students would be in some sort of, it could happen, yes. Because there's so few kids now in half-day.
Sure.
It, you can, you can do it that way.
I don't know if this is the particular, if this is the correct night for us to be discussing it, but I guess I'm looking at your point, sir, which is one way to solve the integrated classroom if we consider that an issue or not, and I'm not convinced. But if we offered full-day kindergarten for everybody, then that would take care of the integrated. That's the only reason I was asking it, and tonight's probably not the right time to discuss that.
That would, that would have budgetary impact.
Yep, right. Why not? Mrs. Doherty.
The other perspective on that that I was wondering is, I was looking at those numbers for half-day and saying, like you said, that that's not enough for one whole class at those schools. Barrows to have a half-day class of twelve, twelve children, that takes half a class for half a day and leaves half a day and a staff person open in the afternoon. So if we're talking about these classrooms.
No, it would be a part-time. Right now, it's a part-time, it would be a part-time person.
Okay.
We don't, we wouldn't hire a person who's a full-time.
My question was if half-day students, half-day kindergarten might be focused in one of the schools that had, that it could be focused in one school and the others, I don't know.
You would have to bust those students which would have an operational impact.
And we've heard, we've heard loud and clear from.
They want their neighborhood schools.
So I would, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to go to, I get it though.
Ideally, all students should have full-day. Or you set it up in a way where you're able to provide both with the space and the resources. But, you know, the integrated works right now, but it shouldn't be the thing that we should say, "Okay, this is what we want to do."
Mr. Robinson.
I had a couple of comments. Someone said, I think that this was free. This is still going to be tuition-based.
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure everyone was aware of that. I guess I'd be a proponent of the six because I guess I'm trying to look at this realistically. I look at it, you know, I know we're saying, you know, we're make, we're saying five years isn't, is, is, but it's probably going to be longer than five years. The community's paying for a library right now. There, people are talking about an operational override. There's a lot of, I think when you look at a million dollars cost, that's something we know lasts more than five years versus a twenty to five to thirty million dollar cost, it just makes sense. So I don't think we should be trying to convince ourselves that we're going to be building something in less than, you know, maybe seven to ten years.
I only projected out five because if you go beyond five, the students haven't been born yet. So that's why I only went out five.
Mr. Knight.
So a couple of things that piggyback on what Elaine said and also something that Dr. Doherty had stated too. I know in discussion with, with the people in the community, I'm just hearing from people that, and some kindergarten parents that are saying that this is a concern they have, that there's a perception that, you know, full-day kindergarten is more about daycare than it is the educational value of it. So I think we have to really make a strong statement when this happens that, you know, the need for full-day kindergarten, we did address it last year, and it has to be emphasized, I think, again. So that people understand that it's, it's, you know, ideally, you know, as I've said, full-day kindergarten, free full-day kindergarten is really necessary in light of, you know, Common Core, Race to the Top initiatives, the expectations that we have for our students now have greatly increased. I mean, to think, and plus that, we have, you know, many preschoolers that are going to school full-day already. So, you know, it's almost like a step backwards to go half-day.
I don't want to lose the fact also, I mean, you brought up all the academic pieces, but kindergarten, social is a major part as well.
True, true, true.
We don't want to lose that. With full-day experiences, that social piece.
Absolutely. Totally agree. Whole child, totally agree.
Thank you for waiting.
No, no problem. My name's Tricia Guanci-Tarian. My son hopefully will be going full-day at Barrows. Thank you for all your time. I know there's been a lot of prep work, obviously, particularly since the, I think we had a November meeting where you invited us to. But you've done best practices, I'm sure. You're crunching the numbers. But realistically, you have about six weeks to that February twenty-third meeting. If the town says, "Okay, we're going to do this," do you have the time to get the buildings made, you know?
Yes, that's why we needed, that's why we need the special town meeting February twenty-third.
And all that, like, you know, I'm hearing site, site work and bidding and to, from now until that meeting, you'll continue, will you be continuing some of that prep work even though it may not come to fruition to be able to, so on February twenty-fourth, if it's a go?
Yes. So just to be clear, the, the construction of the modulars, correct me if I'm wrong, Mrs., the construction of the modulars is on a bid list already. We don't need to go out for bid for that because there's a state bid list. The site prep work, we are going to need to go out to bid on. That's, that's the piece. So in the meantime, what can be happening is the modules can be constructed as the site prep work is going on. We need an eighteen-week turnaround.
That's pretty good. Yeah, great.
And thank you. It's an excellent question. We did talk about it. And again, special town meetings are not something to be taken lightly. They're expensive and we've done the best we can to say if we can have that meeting in February, we could meet the deadline for the start of school.
And one other thing, Dr. Doherty, that you met, you mentioned at the November meeting is you encourage parents to talk to the town selectmen about the appropriation of money that goes to education. And that hadn't been changed since two thousand and three?
No, that's, that's not, that's not what I said.
Do you want to clarify? You encouraged us to.
No, what I was talking about the chapter seventy funding formula, which is not the selectmen. That's the state legislators.
So you, you suggested us to go to the state then?
State legislators. And the state legislator, well, yes. And there are hearings going on throughout the state right now on the funding formula. But.
That hasn't been changed since oh-three?
Since nineteen ninety-three.
Oh, ninety-three.
Yes.
You can go after the selectmen too. But I wouldn't.
I just, you know, I want to make sure as parents that we're, you know, doing our part to help.
Absolutely, thank you. I appreciate that.
And your efforts.
I just had a quick follow-up to Mr. Crusoe's comment about just the town meeting and just to make sure that people understand. So the superintendent spoke on our behalf at town meeting this past week, letting town meeting members know that we were requesting this special town meeting on February twenty-third. Town, annual town meeting is not until April, and so it would, that would preclude this project and we would be sitting here talking about lottery if we had to wait till April. So it was very important that we'd be able to get this special town meeting. I just want people to recognize your town meeting members have all been doing double, triple duty because we've had two special sessions of town meeting already. And there was sort of a lot of sighs in the room when Dr. Doherty, you know, sort of announced the request. So it's very, I think it's very important that, you know, many of us are town meeting members, we like to be able to have a vote on the budget that we vote on here. So to, to get in touch with your town meeting members for your precinct or throughout the town to voice what, you know, you see as the opportunity here and how important this special town meeting is. Because if town meeting doesn't run if it doesn't get a quorum, you can't vote on anything if you don't get a quorum. So we, hopefully people are not just too gosh darn tired out after these marathon sessions that we've had. And the legislators, our local legislator, our state legislators, are they people you want to contact on the chapter seventy? Jason Lewis has been sort of leading that effort. Right, so I, that would be the person.
Thank you.
Sir, Mrs. Doherty.
All right, and I'm sorry, I didn't get your last name, Patricia. Your comment begged some explanation from a question that was asked at one of our last meetings, which was whether people who are not town meeting members can attend town meeting. And at this last, we just had three nights of town meeting this week. And for one of the issues, the gallery was full of people, and I won't say they were all on one side of the issue or the other, but they did have a chance to be recognized and speak. And the fact that people cared enough really registered with those that were elected to be there. And so I would encourage people to, like Ms. Webb said, encourage their town meeting members to attend because some people are not going to be some here at the time because they might go to the, to summer, sorry, go to winter in warmer places. So they might not be there, which makes it very important that those that are here actually go and that people who are invested in the issues can attend and can ask to be recognized. And that that really does make a difference because it's, there are a few of us in town meeting and then there might be a lot more that have an investment to say. So thank you. And thank you to everyone that has come to get up to speed and to lend your minds to these challenges.
Mr. Robinson.
I'd like to make a motion.
Glad to hear it.
I'd like to move to direct the superintendent to pursue a solution to purchase six modular classrooms at an approximate cost of nine hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. And seeing, no discussion? Got really quiet. All those in favor of the motion? Those opposed? And the motion carries six-zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we're going to, if it's okay, we're going to take two minutes and then we'll get started with the budget. Maybe one minute.
One minute.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
And then the administration cost center will be brief.
No, no, I've got an overview.
Wait, whoa. What have I just said?
I know, that's why I said it.
All the school committee meeting back to session. So tonight is the first night, I had mentioned earlier, tonight is the first night of the FY16 budget discussions. I thank members of FinCom, and I thank all of the budget parents and our school administrators. And Ms. Copeland, thank you very much for being here. I thank everyone for taking time out of their busy schedules for being here. Tonight, Dr. Doherty will present an overview of, of the budget. And then we'll also dive into the administration cost center this evening as well. I'd like to ask the committee, if at all possible, if we could hold questions to the end. That, that might make this a smoother process, but please grab my attention if there's something that you wanna ask. Same for the audience. You guys are here, so please feel free to participate. Take it away.
So before I begin, I just wanna say that, that the budget process that we began in September, October, with the financial forums and all of the feedback and input that we received through the process has now led to the product that you have in front of you, which is the superintendent's recommended budget. And a tremendous amount of discussion and thought went into the development of, of this budget. Our administrators and directors put in a significant amount of time. And I wanna thank them, because we had some very thoughtful discussions in a very difficult budget, budget year, which will be a very difficult budget year. I also wanna thank Martha. This was her very first budget. As Director of Finance and Operation, you can see the, the budget book in front of you is an exemplary product and really tells a great story about our district. But also, the numbers, you know, give you a perspective of what, what's going on right now and what will be going on next year. So I wanna thank Martha for, for all of her hard work on this. So this is a, this is a calendar of, of how the process is gonna work. This is our first night of the discussions. Throughout this process, through the month of January, the committee will have, and the community will have a lot of opportunities to ask questions. And we encourage you to ask those questions, send them to us ahead of time. And we will do our best to get them to you answered for the next meeting. Once we get those questions and answers, when they, when it becomes the school committee budget, all of those questions get documented and put in the school committee budget at the end of the booklet. So that the finance committee and the community and town meeting members can take a look at those answers as well. Monday night, we'll be doing regular day and special education. As you know, those are our two largest cost centers. And then on Thursday, we will do the rest of the cost centers, which include athletics, extracurricular activities, health services, district-wide technology, town and school facilities. That will finish the formal presentations. And then Wednesday, the 21st, we will have a financial forum to have some discussions with Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, School Committee about, about the budgetary process. By the way, just so you know, the Board of Selectmen are doing the same thing that we are during the next two weeks. They are having their budgetary discussions very parallel to, to the school committee. On the 22nd, we have, by law, you have to have a public hearing. Although the community asks questions at all of our meetings with the budget, there is a, an official public hearing on the 22nd. That, and the bulk of that night will be spent answering a lot of the questions that you have regarding the budget. And then, right now, you are scheduled to take a vote on the 26th. By statute, I believe now, the budget now has to be given to the town manager by February 1st. And then on March 18th, we will go and present our budget to the Finance Committee. That is the date for the school committee to present the Finance Committee. So that, that's the, the calendar of events as we, as we move forward. So what I wanna do is I wanna set the context for the next several meetings. And the budget is developed with some things in mind each year. And so what I'm gonna go over on the next several slides are the data and the, the information that we use is we are developing the budget. So first, we obviously have to start with our vision of where we wanna be as a school district, where we wanna go as a school district. And certainly, we don't have the resources to do everything we wanna do, but we wanna make sure that we are moving forward and moving in, in the right direction. And with that, as you know, we have a strategic structure to, to, to our goals and to our initiatives. And it starts with these four objectives, which are really the core of what we do. The learning and teaching piece, the performance management piece, investing and developing, and then finally, the resource allocation. And when we develop this budget this year, I will tell you that these four came into play. Particularly the resource allocation, you are gonna see in this budget, there is some, several restructuring of budget items from the past to get us further than we, you know, where we would like to go. Here are the five district goals that we discussed earlier in the, in the school year. These are the five that help drive also where we wanna be as a school district and help develop this budget. And then underneath the five goals, which are at the top, these are, these are all really the initiatives that we're doing, which was in the, the goal action plan that you approved earlier in the year. So these are really all of the areas that we're focusing on as we move forward on those five goals. So another piece of data that we look like is, look at is enrollment. And one of the things that is projected to happen that we're starting to see is that as you jump from 14, 15 to 15, 16, we are expected to see a jump in enrollment, particularly at the elementary school and at the high school as, as our large eighth grade goes to ninth grade. And we've now seen this influx of kindergarten students. We are gonna see a jump next year in enrollment. And I think that, what the discussions we even had today are, are talking about that. Another piece of data that we wanna take a look at is we wanna see, you know, our special education enrollment. And I wanna, I wanna point out to you a couple of things. One is this, this piece of data right here, you notice that last year we had a much lower number of students out of district. And that it took a little bit of a jump this year, 14, 15 to 61, 61. If you remember, what, if you, through the budget, one of the things that we know of next year is that we have a decrease in our circuit breaker. And the decrease in the circuit breaker can occur when we don't have students that reach a certain threshold. And I believe the threshold is around $41,000. So what you see here, and most of those students are out of district. Your students that cost $41,000 to educate are usually students out of district because of the tuition, the transportation. So that certainly is a reflection right here of that decrease in circuit breaker. Now, the, the news for next year, when we're calculating circuit breaker, is that that will probably go back up, because the, the number is back up to 61. So we will probably see an increase back up in the circuit breaker from, from current numbers that we're using for the FY16 budget. The other data that we wanna take a look at is our high-needs subgroup enrollments. And one of the things that we, that really jumped out in this data is our low-income population has increased from 2013, 14 to 2014, 15. You can see that it's gone from 6.6% to 9.2%. I think there's a couple of reasons for this. You've noticed we have had a steady increase over the years in the number of students that are high needs for low income. But one of the things that has also changed is the reporting tool that's used. A lot of times, it was, it was a paper process in the past. And now they use, it's called a virtual.
Virtual gateway.
Virtual gateway, which makes it much easier to identify students that are low-income or run free and reduce lunch. So I think that is also, the students may have been there, it's just that they weren't accounted for. So I think this is a much more accurate number now because of the, the tool, the mechanism that they're now using to identify those students. But it has been on the increase for the last several years. Class size is certainly something that we also wanna look at as we're developing our budget. And as you already know, the one area at the elementary school that we've been concerned about is this Joshua Eaton number, which is why in the budget, there is a request for a grade one teacher for next year. The rest of your class sizes, for the most part, the K to 2 class sizes are in that 18 to 22 range. The 3 to 5 is in the mid-20 range. Our middle schools are, have always been in this, in this range here. Parker is, has been always a little bit lower than Coolidge. You can see that eighth grade, both are, are pretty large. And that's that large enrollment that's gonna go up to the, to the high school next year. And our high school numbers are in the, the 18 to 22 range as well. As you know, high school class size is difficult to calculate, because you have different levels in high school in each grade. But those are, those are fairly accurate, accurate numbers. Now, moving forward, to talk a little bit about how the budget process began and what we look at in the financial forum, one of the things it's done each year is to take a look at the revenue sources and then also take a look at the accommodated costs. And then once you know the revenue, once you know the accommodated cost, what is left is really split between town and schools to develop their, their, their non-accommodated cost budgets. And so our revenue sources, as you know, are, the bulk of it is property taxes. You have, you do have other local revenues, which include excise tax and fees and things like that. You also have state aid. One of the things I think is important to note is with the Chapter 70 piece, is because we have pretty much reached our limit with Chapter 70 funding, the only additional Chapter 70 funding we're gonna get from this point forward is any, like we have the last couple of years, is the, the one where you're held harvest. And so for the last couple of years, we've received an extra $25 a student, and that's been it. We've not really received any additional Chapter 70 funding formula. I think you know, and we've talked about before, that the funding formula is inadequate. There are a lot of things that in 1993, were in a formula that, that don't, don't hold true today or were not in the formula, that don't hold true today. And there is a, there is a commission that's looking at it. But I've also said this before, two things need to happen. The formula needs to change, plus there needs to be an increase in revenue with the Chapter 70 funding formula. My fear is, if they just change the formula, we are actually gonna see a decrease in state aid. So that's something to keep in mind, that it's only one piece of the puzzle. You need both. I think another important piece to remember is that we have become, over the last few years, more and more reliant as a town on our budget to have, to use an influx of free cash. The fortunate piece has been, we've had regeneration of free cash over the last few years. So it hasn't really resulted in a deficit in, in free cash revenues. But I think we all know that this is not good budgetary practice and that we have a structural deficit that's gonna have to get addressed at some, some point with, with the budget. So this is, you know, this is the total revenue that we were looking at with town and schools as we were developing our budget. We also took a look at our accommodated costs. These are all the accommodated costs that are used. Benefits, which is shared by both town and school employees, capital, certainly, debt, the energy. We are anticipating there will be an increase in energy costs next year. Natural gas contract is ending in June, so we are expecting that there will be an increase there as natural gas prices tend to be on the upswing. Now, the oil prices are down, so that may have an effect in a good way on our natural gas. Special education is also an accommodated cost, and that's the out-of-district piece of special education, tuition and transportation. So then from there, the, we knew our number. And so at the financial forum, you know that the, the FinCom recommendation is that we would develop a 2.5% budget, a 2.5% increase budget, which, which is $41,350,43. Now, we did some calculation, calculation of the level service budget and what, what really the, the revenue that we would need to have a level service budget. And that would be $42,199,663, which really is a difference of $849,620, which is a 4.7% increase. So the budget that I'm gonna present to you tonight is the 2.5% budget. But we also list how we reduced the budget by $849,620, which is the 4.7% budget. But the budget you have in front of you is the 2.5% budget. And one of the other things that you've seen in your budget book, we talk about, is the per pupil comparison. We do not have FY14 or 15 data, because that's based on the end of the year report. And there are some districts that have not submitted that information yet. But you can see that from a per pupil standpoint, reading is the, the lowest with the comparable communities that we use when we, when we look at the data. And again, I, as I've mentioned before, and I wanna, I wanna preface this by saying that we are extremely appreciative of the funds that we receive from our community. And that the per pupil comparison is to show that there are two things going on here. One is the Chapter 70 funding piece that I mentioned earlier. And two is the piece I just mentioned about the structural deficit piece with the use of, of free cash. But I think the other piece to remember, which is a positive, is that we are also cited in a lot of ways for the, the way we manage our funds. And, and when you look at the data, the data shows that we do a very good job with the money that we have. So I think a, a couple of other things to, to take a look at when we're looking at the, the spending categories and the state averages, there are some areas that we do very well in. And this is FY13. Professional development, for example, we, we are usually above the state average. There is some reasons for that. One is the tuition reimbursement piece that is part of the collective bargaining agreement. Another is we do, we have five non-school days, non-student days, which are calculated as part of the professional development in the, in the end of the year report. And, and we also do spend some funding on professional development. We believe that investing in our, in our staff is, is one of the ways that you can build capacity. You also notice that we're above the state average with in You also notice that we're above the state average with instructional materials, equipment, and technology. And the big reason for that in this year is this is the year that we purchased the math program, the new math program. So it was a bump up of an influx of one-time funding to purchase that that new program. So you see that that moved us above the state average. The other areas, oh, and then the payments to out-of-district schools. And the reason why that number is so high, because sometimes people look at that and say, oh, why is that number so high? It's because we have so few students that are in are in payments to out-of-district schools compared to other communities, which inflates that number. That doesn't that doesn't necessarily have a major impact on the total difference between the state and the district. But you could see that we're about twenty-seven hundred dollars below the state average when it comes to per pupil expenditure. And again, when you take a look at when you're with comparable communities, the ranking, again, depending on where we are, the total, we're thirteenth out of the thirteen communities. Supplies were pretty high, professional development were high. But the other two areas, which is the administration and classroom and teacher specialists, we are more at the lower end. Special education, I want to I want to point out, and one of the things that consciously, and you know that we've tried to do over the last several years, is invest into our in our in-house programming. We feel that for most students, this is the best option for them, to be with their peers in an inclusionary setting as much as possible. So you could see that, over time, we have spent, invested more in our in-district instruction and programming with special education, which has resulted in a decrease in out-of-district tuition costs, which is really the direction that you want to go. Also see that, over time, the amount of funding that we have spent on special education has gone down with our comparable communities. And again, it's because we are investing more in the in-district programs, which is less costly than sending students out of district. And this is the point I was mentioning earlier, historically, the amount of funding that we get in our budget versus what we actually spend. And as you know, in last year in FY14, we did turn back a half a million dollars, which was mostly special education tuition funding for students that we had anticipated were going to be going to out-of-district places and did not. So now to the budget. Now that we have all of that data, as we look and we calculate the budget and develop the budget. So the big drivers of our budget for this year, for FY16, is certainly any salary and benefit obligations. Next year, we'll be in year two of collective bargaining agreement with all of our five unions. Also, non-salary, non-unit and non-union and salary benefits. And those are in line with the cost of living adjustment for the collective bargaining units. Remember, non-union personnel do not have steps, they do not have columns, whereas the bargaining units do. So non-union, it's just the COLA, it's not the COLA plus the steps plus columns. So that is that is the difference. We also, in the budget drivers, put into account any anticipated increases in special education, transportation tuition increases, which is usually about three percent for out-of-district. We also know that we were getting a decrease in circuit breaker, and also any known students that we think will be going on out-of-district. What is not in this budget are any unanticipated tuition costs, parent educator costs, special education teacher costs. Also, as I mentioned earlier, we are anticipating an increase in natural gas costs when our contract ends June two thousand fifteen. So those were the major drivers of this budget. So we're going to go through the different categories of the budget to give you an idea of how we came up with that forty-one million. So the first category is salary and other compensation. Certainly, this is the largest category because eighty percent of our budget is personnel, or close to eighty percent is personnel. So you could see that this is the largest, this is an increase, and it is, again, due to all of the its salary increases and step increase, column increases. So any any contractual increases in both for union and non-union. We have also put into this budget six FTEs which are restructured. And I want to emphasize that these are not additional positions in the budget. These are positions that we feel we absolutely needed to continue to move forward as a district, and we have taken existing funding from line items and restructured them. These are things that we would be doing regardless if we were making budget cuts or not. So you could see, we talked about the grade-one teacher, Joshua Eaton, the K-eight literacy coach, and the K-eight mathematics coach, which were restructured from professional development funding. The board-certified behavior analyst, which is essentially taking consulting money that we use to to bring in a BCBA from the Sein Collaborative and make it an in-house position. Technician, which we converted some grant savings from the School Transformation Grant because we're taking a piece of of an existing person to become a data analyst, so a piece of their salary. And a program director for SSP, TSP, we're taking an existing position and converting it to to a program director. There are some reductions in this category, substitute teachers, and I'll go in a little bit deeper with that later, and personnel reduction of regular education parent educators at the elementary level. Contracted services, this is a decrease in this category. Some of the decreases include the special education legal services, also the the restructuring for the BCBA, which I mentioned earlier, is coming out of this category, the non-mandatory busing, which I will go into in more detail in a minute, and the grant-writing services. Those are all contract services. Material supplies and equipment is another category that decreased in this budget. The biggest decrease is the building per pupil budgets. It's about a seventy-six thousand dollar decrease. Essentially, the building per pupil budget is is the funding that our building principals use for the day-to-day operations of the school, material supplies, rental for the copiers, or leasing of the copiers, anything that that is the day-to-day operation. Other expenses also saw a decrease. The two decreased areas here is the professional development funding. NADA was restructured for the coaches, and also we added replacement technology hardware, which is restructured from the per pupil spending, which is part of the restructuring. The special education tuition and transportation categories, I mentioned earlier, was an increase. And this is really a couple of things. One is the three percent increase in tuition costs, the reduction to circuit breaker, and the increase in special education transportation. And then finally, energy and utilities, which is shows a decrease of seventeen thousand. A couple of things here. One is that there is a decrease in consumption of electricity, which which means that we've decreased the use of that in funding in that budget. We are seeing an increase, as I said, we're seeing an increase in the new natural gas contract. There is also an offset, a new offset to this budget for utilities from our extended-day program, which leads to this decrease as well. And then finally, the grant and revenue offsets, and this is the piece that made up the biggest chunk of the the reduction that we we made. And there's a few things that we are, we are proposing this budget, that there be an increase in offsets to the athletics and extracurricular, which would result in an increase in the athletic and extracurricular user fees at the high school. We also are proposing an increase in the revenue offsets for two revolving accounts, one being, I'm sorry, two special education revolving accounts, one being the tuition revolving account where we do have some students in district, we have five students currently in district, that other communities pay to send the students here for our programs. And so we're taking some of that funding to offset the circuit breaker decrease, and also an increase in RISE, that we are, we are taking an offset from, an additional offset from RISE. We are also increasing our offset from full-day kindergarten because of the the increase in full-day kindergarten, the number of students, and also extended day, which is what I had mentioned earlier for utilities. And also, the MEKO grant. So a few years ago, we were taking a hundred thousand dollar offset from the MEKO grant. We did reduce that down over the last couple of years. We do feel now that we can bump that back up by another twenty-five thousand to bring it back up to a hundred thousand where it was a few years ago. So here's a summary of the reductions. I'm going to go in a little bit of detail now with this. The grant writing, the grant writing piece, this, there is an amount in administrative cost center for eighty-five hundred dollars. This amount of funding was always put aside in case we were going for some major grants, whether it be a federal grant or a foundation grant, something like that. At this point, where we were successful, thanks to Erica McMaris, Sarah Bird, last year, who, by the way, wrote those, their own grants, we didn't ask a grant writer to write them. Because right now, we are, we are managing two major grants in the district, we don't feel at this point that we have the capacity to continue with another major grant right now. So we feel comfortable with this reduction at this point. However, it's not going to stop us from writing grants for smaller amounts, we do that all the time. This is really precludes us if we want to go for a major grant. But again, as we showed last year, we have gone for major grants without the use of a grant writer. The regular day bus transportation, what we're proposing is that we are eliminating all non-mandatory bus transportation for next year unless it can be self-funded. Currently, we do subsidize a lot of non-mandatory bus transportation in the district. And students do pay a user fee to ride on the bus if they are not, that we're not, if we're not required by law to to bus. The law says that you have to bus students that are K to six and over two miles from a from a school. We do have several students that are on the bus right now that do not do that, and they do pay a fee of three hundred sixty-five dollars. If a bus will be self-sustained, what we're calculating is that the user fee would have to go up to four hundred fifty dollars, and that there would not be a cap for those buses. Substitute teachers, there are several categories in the budget for substitute teachers. Some of it certainly is for when a teacher is out of illness. We also use substitute teachers for professional development, or for when, for meetings, or for special events, when we need to use teachers for several of these things like that. This reduction is going to take a look at how we use teachers for professional development purposes and for other purposes that are not illness-related. So we've already started having discussions with the principals on how we can do things more effectively so that we can make this make this reduction in the budget. The per pupil budget, there's, there's two reductions in the per pupil budget. One is twenty-six thousand dollars of this reduction, the other one you're going to see in the next slide of fifty thousand dollars, which is restructuring. The per pupil budget, as I mentioned earlier, this is the amount of money that the that the principals receive for the day-to-day operations. The middle school and the high school are going to take a slightly larger reduction than the elementary schools in, on this reduction item. Virtual high school is an online program that students at both the middle and the high school do access, they take courses online. The current structure that we have with virtual high school is that we, through the contract way with virtual high school, we hire some teachers, we provide a stipend for some teachers to teach online courses. And by them doing that, it gives us a number of slots for students to access courses. What we're finding is that that model is not efficient from the fact that we don't always fill all our slots. So we are going to go to a single-course subscription offering. We do have money still budgeted with virtual high school for students who want to take a course and are able to. What you see here, the eighteen thousand, one-twenty, this is all stipends. So we will no longer have our teachers teaching online courses through virtual high school. I already talked about the, oh, no, I'm sorry, the next one is EMARC restructuring. So we spend, we spend each year about a little over two hundred thousand dollars for EMARC services. EMARC is, provides services for our eighteen to twenty-two-year-olds, life skills, job coaching skills, these are the students that are on individualized education plans. What we are, what we are proposing is a restructuring of the the way we use our EMARC services. This is not going to result in a decrease in the quality of the services that our students are receiving, it's using the resources more effectively. And we feel that we can do this with this with this reduction. Talked already about the offsets, the extracurricular user fee. What we are proposing currently in athletics, the user fee is two hundred and fifteen dollars per sport. We are, we are proposing an increase to two hundred fifty dollars per sport with a cap of, this is where I'm going to, a cap of going from eight fifty to nine fifty, and an individual cap of six fifty. For extracurricular user fee, we are proposing increase in the drama from one fifty to one seventy-five.
From one hundred to one twenty-five.
One hundred, one twenty-five, sorry, one hundred to one twenty-five. And for someone that's on the tech crew, to, for fifty to seventy-five. And I already talked about this item, about the increase in special education tuition and RISE. And then in the reduction of regular education parent educators, we're not, we are in the process of developing what this is going to look like. It's, it's going to be a combination of hours and FTEs. Certainly, this will have an impact, a significant impact, on some of the things that we do at the elementary level with with students. So those are the reductions to get to the eight hundred forty-nine thousand dollars that I showed you with the level service budget. The other piece that we've done is we've done the restructuring piece, which I feel is extremely important for us to continue to move forward as as a district. And when we go over each of the cost centers, we will be talking in specificity about each of these positions, particularly the coaches, the program director, and the BCBA, because those those are new. The grade-one teacher I've already mentioned, the two coaches are certainly extremely necessary to provide that coaching and support for teachers as we are making that transition through the frameworks. We've had a lot of conversation over the last several months about the value of having these coaches to provide that professional development. It only made sense to restructure this from professional development funding. The technician allows us to continue to support all of the devices in that we're using, both mobile devices, hardware, laptops, smart boards. Currently, we have, I believe, three point five, three four five, and this would get us an additional FTE to do that. The technology replenishment is to get back up to the level that we were pre this year. We had a hundred thousand dollars in the budget for technology replenishment. We're trying to get on a five-year cycle, and this doesn't get us to a five-year cycle, but it gets gets us closer to that. So this is a fifty thousand dollar restructuring from the per pupil budget. Program director for student support and therapeutic support is a necessary position to create a vertical coordination of our student support program at Killam, Coolidge, the high school, and our therapeutic support program at the high school. This is to provide support, guidance, coaching for our teachers at each level of these programs. These are some of our most emotionally fragile students, and this position is necessary so that we can continue to have these these programs remain strong for those kids. And then the And then the board certified behavior analyst is a position that we currently contract out for, it seems, it allows us to bring an in-house position for approximately the same amount of funding and to provide that in-house support with the same person, instead of bringing someone in who may be different each time. So, taking a look at, how does this break down by cost center, through the five cost centers that you're gonna now be hearing about over the next several nights? The administration cost center has gone down from last year, essentially that's because of turnover savings. Regular day is up three percent, and that's primarily because of the, the salary increases through the collective bargaining agreement in, in non-union. Special education is up two point three percent, again because of salary and tuition increases. Also, don't forget, in there is the circuit breaker decrease as well. School facilities is down a tenth of a percent, and that is, that is partly because of that additional offset from extended day. And district-wide programs is four point eight percent, and a lot of that is salary increases. And that's how you get the two point five, two point five, six percent to get to the forty-one million. How does it break down by cost center? You can see that our largest is regular day, which is what it should be, because that's, that's where all your instructional core is. Your special education, the second highest one. And then your, your district-wide services is your, one of your smallest ones, administration is the smallest cost center, and then followed by school facilities. Over time, you can see there's been very little change in the, the allocations. Administration has actually gone down over time. Your regular day has, has gone up and down, special education, the same. So, you can see that pretty much the, they fluctuate a bit only by a tenth or so a percent. This is now, taking a look at this by DESE, major function, it's just another way of looking at how the, the money is spent. So, if you're looking at this as a dollar, every two cents goes to district administration, seventy-six cents goes to instructional services, which is mostly your instructional staff, other school services, five cents, operation and maintenance is another eight, nine cents, and then payment to other districts is seven, seven cents. And then looking at this from, by the different categories, you can see your professional salaries, which is primarily teachers and any certified staff, it's gone up four point seven percent, clerical, pretty much the same, other salaries have, have gone down. Your contracted, these are where your major decreases are from the amount of funding that we had to reduce. The three point four percent is the paraeducator salaries decrease, contracted services, which I talked about earlier, supplies and materials. And I think this is one of the last slides for this piece. The, certainly, this budget does not have all of the needs that we feel we need. And, you know, looking back at last year, the needs, and looking at this year, one of the things that we were able to do from last year to this year is to put in some of the things from last year's list into this, into this year's budget by restructuring things. So, we were able to get some of our unfunded needs from last year into this year, which I, I think is good, 'cause it shows we're still, we're still trying to move forward, even with difficult times. So, you can see here that a lot of the positions that we're talking about here focus on either behavioral health, providing support to students in a tier-two manner with, through academics, or providing more direct services with special education staff, or time to collaborate, or having like another instructional technology specialist at the elementary school to provide that support for teachers to integrate technology more effectively. These are the types of positions that you see here that will, would continue to build capacity, support students, and help us to continue to grow and move forward. But we did not feel that putting an additional million dollars in the budget at this point would, would be beneficial with the resources that we have available. This would've, this would've given us about a seven percent increase in the budget overall, when you include this and the four point, the eight hundred and fifty thousand. So, here is what this budget is not able to address beyond that list, and I, I look at this as another category, kinda like to the next level, because one of the things that we're gonna need to eventually do as a school district is take a long look at some of the things we currently offer and how we wanna continue to grow. And right now, the budgets that we have can't do that without additional funding. So, for example, we talked about full day kindergarten earlier. We know that the chapter seventy funding will not provide us additional funding if we went to tuition-free, so that would be an added expense to an operational budget if we were gonna provide that for all students. One of the other things that I know community has talked about, parents have talked about, we have talked about as educators, is restructuring the elementary school schedule, eliminating the early release Wednesdays, which right now, a lot of that is to provide contractual planning time, so teachers can, can do the things they need to do in the classroom. In order to do that, though, you need to add programs to your elementary schools to give teachers the contractual planning time during the school day. So, wouldn't it be exciting to do things like adding additional programs and courses like engineering and computer science and fine arts, maybe foreign language, whatever those things are? One of the things in the goals, if you remember, in March, we're gonna start creating task forces by level to start looking at, what are the things we need to do to continue to improve as a district, and this would be one of them. Also, what's not in this budget, and is something that will have to be addressed in FY seventeen, is implementing, and I know I've been saying this for five years now, but it's gonna happen next year, because the frameworks are here now, is we're gonna be implementing a new science curriculum frameworks. That will require time, material, funding. It will have to be done next year, and that's something that's not in this budget. And then I know Mr. Barker has had a lot of conversations with his staff about the schedule, and the types of programs that the high school could offer down the road. So, restructuring the high school schedule and looking at program to continue to prepare those students for college and career is something that, is something we wanna address, can't address in this budget, but we wanna address down the road. So, those are the types of things that we do need to do if we wanna continue to be a top school district. And then there's a future concern, and we actually had, we were at a town department head meeting today, and we were talking about budget, both town and schools were talking about this. And we're talking about FY seventeen, because we are very concerned about FY seventeen. We have done everything we can in FY sixteen, in this school department budget, to limit personnel reductions, while continuing to do what we need to do to move and improve as a district. There are no other restructuring things we can do, there are no other offset increases, because as you know, when you increase an offset, that's the level you start at the following year. So, the next thing that will happen is if the continuing conditions remain in FY seventeen, as they do in FY sixteen, we will be making personnel reductions next year. And conservatively, what, if you remember at the financial forum, this year was a two point five percent budget, next year was a one point seven percent budget. So, when you look at all that, I would say conservatively, if we were cutting eight hundred and fifty thousand this year, we'd be cutting nine hundred thousand next year. So, and I know one of the things that we talked about today is that probably in March, we would be giving you a back-of-the-umbol of FY seventeen, what would it look like? 'Cause I think that's something the finance committee's requested. So, we are very concerned about FY seventeen, and, and what, what could happen. So, it wasn't forty-five.
Yeah, it was.
That was close.
Just before, yeah, are there, are there general questions or questions? We wanna, we don't wanna make too many comments, but any questions? Mrs. Browsky, do you have a question?
It's not a general question, it's like a specific question.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's even way better.
Okay, so on the, can you just, can you go to the free and reduced lunch?
Yes.
And low income, and, and then tell me what page that is or something?
Some page.
Oh, they're not numbered. Well, you get it up there, I'll, I'll remember my question.
Yeah.
High need subgroup enrollment?
Yeah. Yeah, I'll go high need subgroup enrollment.
I should've just, here we go.
Okay, so, one thing, maybe I just don't understand the definitions of those, 'cause I thought it was interesting that the reduced lunches were really flat, and okay, the, the low-income enrollment group, you explained this, sort of the spike, 'cause that definitely is sort of, you know, the trend line is, is sort of like this, and then it goes, that last year, she explained that, but, and was that, is that the same impact on the free lunch, and why isn't that on the reduced lunch? What's that about?
So, when I spoke with the food services director, Krista Morello, one of the things that she explained is that the, the virtual gateway that is connected to all the different source assistance, you know, transitional assistance, all the other programs that are out there, identify the students much better now. So, a lot, and those, those are the very high needs, those are the families that meet the criteria for free, and that there's not a lot of fluctuation year over year in the reduced, that, that's the free.
So, is that self-reported? Is that how, that, this virtual gateway, is that something that parents are?
No, it's tapping in, because the states communicate that information to us now, whereas before, it had to be self-reported, so that's why we think the numbers are going up. Because the people, families wouldn't fill out the paperwork.
And why it's not reduced? Because that's just not generally the population that, that's good, that gets the, to that, through that gateway?
Correct.
And are the low, is the low-income students getting the free lunch, or is those two, what's?
Yes, so the, the low-income is the combined, of the free and reduced.
Yeah, most of your low-income, most of your low-income.
Trying to try to add those up. That's okay.
There we go. Ah, yeah, I got it, one hundred and twenty-nine, yep, eighty-seven, forty-seven. Okay, so that's the combined thing?
Yeah.
Okay, I see, and the, and it's really, the virtual gateway really targets that, the low-income portion, that is free lunch versus the reduced lunch?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Browsky, can I just have a follow-up on that? So, I think something, Martha, you just said that the, that the data collection's better now? So, you know, maybe the number, maybe the number from the prior year's not right?
Correct.
So, the increase might not be the, as high as we think it is.
Absolutely, and that was something that, that Krista Morello theorized with me. She said, you know, if you go back to two thousand and seven, where it was paper, people had to fill out the paperwork to get the free and reduced, and see if they qualified or not, that now that we have the, the tools available to, to identify a lot, and, and direct certify basically through, through the state systems, that we are seeing the increase.
Now, maybe we'll come up with more better names than free lunch and reduced.
Well, that's the federal name for it.
Mr. Browsky?
So, not a question, well, maybe it's a question, but concern. I know we've talked about reduction of substitute teacher funding, and I know that it was a priority last year to increase that, and I understand that, from what I heard tonight, that it, it would not impact teachers' absences and so forth, it would be curriculum initiatives and...
The plan is, is not to go without a teacher in the classroom if a teacher is out.
But then also, reduction in regular education, paraeducators. I think what I've heard anyways, and what I recall from my own experiences, is that oftentimes, a paraeducator might be put into that classroom while a teacher is potentially in a IEP meeting, or maybe doing some curriculum work, or some testing. And so, I just don't, I'm not sure if, you know, I'm wondering about the offset there, that, you know, we're cutting both areas, but we're trying to save funding at the same time. I, I don't know if that's almost like two negatives to, to, to reach a goal that, I don't know if it's gonna be something that's feasible, you know? I mean, I know you've given it some thought.
No, we, we've given it a lot of thought, and we've already started having conversations about the paraeducator reductions and what that's gonna look like. I mean, it's gonna be a change in the way we do business.
And then I would also state too, that, I guess, another concern that I have too is I noticed the school transformation grant savings, which is going into a technician. I understand the need for, for, you know, technology expert at the various levels with all the technology that now is integrated into our curriculum and student learning. But we also are saving some funding from, I know we reduced the health educator cost at the high school, there was some savings on that, a percentage of that, thought I, thought I heard from the...
We didn't, we didn't change, we didn't say, keep making savings from the health educator costs.
So, we're not, you're not using grant funds to pay Sarah, Sarah Bird, the other Sarah? Wasn't there some funding going, being directed towards her salary from, from the grant, from the...
Just, just the after, just the after-school piece.
All right, but isn't that, isn't that already been accounted for? Wasn't that part of her salary?
It's counted for in the, the whole, the whole pot, yeah.
So, essentially, that was money that we were paying anyways, though. Wasn't she getting paid to do that already? And now, we're putting some funding into that, so the district is saving some money?
The district, that went into part of the cut.
Right, when I'm, right, that was what I was looking for here. So, my, my question is too, is that a year ago, we cut the health education at the middle school.
Correct.
And, you know, I don't, I'd like to see that as a priority, we've talked about it, but it hasn't happened. I know you've mentioned in your, in your goals for next year, that it would potentially happen next year if we had an override.
It was two years.
Two years?
You look at my goals, it doesn't say for next year, it says for following year.
Okay, even, even worse, as far as I'm concerned. There's a great need for it in the community, is a, is a cry for it. We're seeing behaviors escalate, you know, at, you know, students that have recently graduated, but we're also seeing some behaviors now with our current student population that are concerning.
We, we understand that, and we've had that conversation, we...
I know we've had conversations, but...
No, no, I'm talking about with administrators, I'm not talking about, and we've also talked with school members. And Mr. Cruz, I don't know if this is the type of conversation that we wanna have now, or...
Do you think it'd be more applicable when we're actually talking about that cost center? Is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, that's, but I, I guess to answer your question, I think to do health education, right, the middle school one position is not the way.
I would agree.
So, that's why I think we have to wait until we have the funding to do it right.
All right, but I'd also think that it would be, it would work at the elementary level. We've had that discussion. But anyway, so we can talk about that when we get to regular day, I guess. And, and then just one last comment to that is, I'm a little concerned that we talk about that health education position, is sort of, wouldn't it be nice to have these to offset the extended, or the, the full Wednesday? You know, we need to, we need to essentially set up planning time for our classroom teachers, which of course is necessary, but it almost seems like, the way it was presented, I don't think you meant it that way, but it came across that way to me, that, you know, well, the health education position would help, you know, that would be the key component of health education.
No, that, no, and if I said it that way, I, I'm, I'm sorry, my, my point was, the only way that you're going to be able to go to a full Wednesday program...
I understand, right.
Is if you provide that planning time throughout the week.
Right, I, I understand that.
To do that, you need to add staff.
Right, I understand that.
So, my point is, is rather than just saying, okay, let's add more art, music, and PE, let's add other programs that we currently don't have at the elementary, and enhance our elementary school day.
I, I understand that.
That's what I'm saying.
But I'm also saying, it's, the way it comes across, it's not so much that it's needed as much as it's going to help that Wednesday afternoon issue. That's how it came across to me anyways.
Well, unfortunately, that's the reason why we have the Wednesdays right now, so that's why I have to say it that way. We have the Wednesdays right now because we have to provide contractual...
It's concerning, if that's the way we're stating it.
No, but that's the reason why.
Oh, I hear what you're saying, don't, don't get me wrong, I hear what you're saying, I understand that. What I'm saying is, I think it should be, I don't like it seeming presented as that. I, I think it's important enough that it should stand on its own, it shouldn't necessarily be stated that way. That's just my comment.
Mrs. Browsky?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Kudos to the work that you've all done, truly, it's really impressive. I have a question about the circuit breaker. How much of that actually covers our out-of-district placements? And is that number changing over time? I know like every year, chapter seventy covers less and less, right? Is circuit breaker similar?
Chapter seventy doesn't really fund anything specific, and it goes to the town and to the town general fund. But, circuit breaker, it covers our out-of-district. It's used exclusively to cover tuitions for out-of-district, whether it's in-state private or in-state residential. I know for this current year, we're using our, our one-point-one-million-dollar award for residential only. Like, we're not splitting it up between day and residential, we're just using it for residential primarily. So, next year's award, actually, let me restate that. This year's award, that we have been able and very fortunate to save and have budget certainty in next year, is nine-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand dollars. And how we'll apply that, I would guess we'll apply it mostly to out-of-state residential programs.
The circuit breaker reimburses about seventy to seventy-five percent of our costs.
That's the number.
Depending on...
Is that what you're asking? Oh, I'm so sorry, I misunderstood, I missed your question.
No, that, that was good information anyway.
Okay.
So, seventy to seventy-five percent, is that changing over time?
Um, it depends, it depends. In, in some years, it has, and that's, the years that we had to make nine-C cuts, it has. That was four or five years ago, it was down as low as fifty percent.
And as low as forty.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think it's been forty, it's back up to seventy-five.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mrs. Webb?
Yeah, I have one question, the slide that you, actually, I have one more question. The slide that you had that, had at the very end here, I just wanna know, is it in the budget book? It basically summarizes the information on like pages eleven and fourteen. The things that you had to cut, basically the places that you had to cut. You have one slide that sort of summarizes them all? It was like your second and third to last slide. I just, as I'm going through the budget book, I'm just wondering if that's not in here.
It's in there.
Oh, it's in there.
It's in the superintendent's message. It's right in the front.
Page eight.
Oh, page eight, okay.
You talking about this?
Um, no, the very, at the very end, you have more details describing...
Unfunded?
Yeah.
Oh, the unfunded.
Unfunded, the stuff you described.
That's in there as well.
Right here, page one. Oh, I didn't identify that.
There's a whole explanation in there.
Oh, okay.
That's page eleven.
Oh, page eleven, oh, okay, that's what I was looking for, wasn't in the same colors. And I, I, can I, Mr. Crusoe?
Of course.
So, on the per pupil spending, I just was sort of curious, the supplies and materials was, is, I totally wasn't expecting that. I, I think we said, is that also related to the curriculum implementation?
That's the math in focus.
Okay, cause that was...
It was a one-time, and I believe it was about three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars.
I wanna say we went from being eighth last year to second this year. You did, it's a significant jump year over year.
Okay, so does it show up?
So, it's the math curriculum.
It shows up maybe in more than one way, because when you look at the state information, you're looking at, there's one way they cut it and they look at maybe curriculum, and another way where it's like materials and supplies.
Correct.
Okay, so I saw, I was just making sure that I was seeing that.
We've tried to show it to you through different lenses, which I know sometimes can be confusing, but I think it's helpful.
And I, so I think overall, I appreciate the way that it was laid out. Although I share Mr. Nine's concerns about the health, I think I'm still sort of processing sort of all of the things that are, you know, unfunded and, you know, what the priorities are. And I, I really have a significant concern about making sure that we can address the sci, that science curriculum. I, you said it's been five years, but it's been...
No, no, I didn't say, I said, I've been saying it's five years in this position.
Oh, in your position. Okay, because you've been saying it for a long time. Right, since nineteen, okay, I just wanted, right, since more...
I made a, I made a comment the other day, over, we presented...
The budget merits.
That the science curriculum hasn't changed since I started teaching science at Coolidge, which was a long time ago.
Thank you. I have a sort of flag, just to raise, that I think that, I understand why we need to increase the athletic and extracurricular user fees. I would just like us to take note and watch what happens when we do that. If there are people that then start, children that start not participating because, yes, they might be able to get qualified for help, but they might not ask for that help. And so, my concern would be if people, if families stop saying yes to their students when they wanna participate, that's one concern. The other concern is that all of our money sort of comes from one pie. And the parents and all of those organizations are not just paying those user fees, they're also paying for fundraisers, for raffle baskets, for et cetera. And if they end up, we end up not having the money to do, having to make choices between where the money goes, we might see money that we rely on now. You alluded to the fact that our pupil, per pupil spending and the managing of our money reflects how wonderful our parents are and their contributions to. Maybe I'm extending what you said, but our parents cover a lot of the costs that otherwise would mean cuts in, in extracurricular activities and, and extra enhancing learning opportunities. So, I think that we need to keep sight of that. And if we do do this increase this year, we need to keep track of what the ramifications of that are.
And you notice in the budget book, we do keep track of participation rates. I believe it's over...
It's towards the back of the book, yeah, it's over twelve-hundred, yes.
Mr. Robinson?
I, I didn't, I wasn't gonna bring that up tonight, but since, since it's come up, I'm having a problem with, with it for a couple reasons. Well, one of, one of the reasons, as, as Dr. Doctor said, is we're already on the backs of parents through fundraising and raffles and selling cards and to raise money. But, one of the things that, that I think it also will do, it may not be happening now with athletic fees, but as we increase them, I think I might have mentioned this to you, we're putting pressure on the coaches, because there's gonna be an expectation from parents that, you know, why isn't my son or daughter out there on the field? I'm paying, you know, you know, whatever, whatever we went up to, I mean, that, that...
Thirty, thirty-five thousand.
And I, I think that's coming down the road, it's already happening.
Sure.
And, you know, and, and, you know, there's communities that don't charge athletic fees at all. And, you know, I don't know where I am with it yet, cause we're just starting the budget process, but when I saw that, that was one of the concerns I had.
Can I just make a global...
We're gonna have a much longer conversation on that particular...
Yeah, no, not about athletic fees, it's just a global comment. I mean, you know, going back to this reduction list, which I, hold on, or maybe it's the other way around. Anyway, I think, one of the important things, when we put together this budget, one of the, I think, things that we wanted to make sure we avoided as much as possible was cutting, cutting teachers in the classroom. When we first started this process, and the principals and other staff can attest, cause we were, everyone's been a part of it, you know, there was a lot of those positions that we were looking at when we first started this process, when we saw that we had to cut, you know, around eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. So, that was our whole basis. Certainly, the committee can take that information and they can, they can make the changes necessary. But, our, our goal was to avoid major personnel cuts. And I know, I know that there's a lot of things here that we, I don't agree with a lot of the things on the list, but the bottom line is, it did save making reductions in other areas, so.
Thank you.
See?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, I, I do wanna thank Dr. Dory and Lisa Martin and Mrs. Wilson, and the number of other people who helped, cause this is a global effort, so the principals, everyone else who participated in this, specifically the Southern Walker staff, with Linda, Lori Miller, Damian Yanoff, and people working with Kristen and Colleen, those are fantastic. So, we're gonna talk about the administrative cost center. Sounded like an award speech, didn't it? I wanna thank. So, this is the major costs, cost center function. We obviously, we fund the school committee, superintendent, the assistant superintendent, business and finance, human resources. We fund a portion of the district-wide information management, and legal services. And also, that could be there is the audit services, which we're gearing up for our end-of-year audit and our state law audit of our IDA grant, which would be great. So, John touched on this a little bit earlier, with the major administrative initiatives. And certainly, MTSS and Parker are big on the list, but other things that we wanna do is, we really do wanna look at developing systems to evaluate our resources. We do have a new HR administrator, and this is something that we are working in two other months on, looking at how we can look at how we're staffed. Certainly, we're gonna strengthen our human resources systems to better support ourselves. Michelle Lassandra has some wonderful ideas, and hopefully, we'll be working on those soon. The early childhood working group, I know is working hard on the developing and implementing a long-term plan for space needs, and obviously, they did a presentation earlier about space needs. So, as you can see, there really, there really hasn't been a significant change in headcount year over year for the administrative cost center. We have the administration, which is the administrative assistants, district administrators. This is, the point three is the district-wide technology person. And then the other four would be John, Craig, myself, and now Michelle. This cost center, really the, the professional salary line, the, the four percent savings, that's, that's staff turnover. We have had an increase in legal fees, which is showing up here in our contracted services. So, this increase is a function of the increased legal expense, which is offset by a grant reduction, the, the grant writer that we talked about earlier. So, the increase in legal was somewhat offset by that. This is the good. So, as you can see, we're, we're fairly consistent with the school committee. We've budgeted to have additional funds for new members coming on and attending conferences, things like that. The superintendent's salary line, that's not the salary line, that's a lot of other things in there too. That would be nice. The biggest thing here is, is, I don't know if you can see it well on the chart up here, but all of these ones, the, the beginning would be the one, that's the DESE co-charter accounts and where these things fall into that per pupil that we've talked about before. So, anything that starts in a one, start, will roll into those eleven different categories differently based on what that number is. The other thing to know here is, I know we had a question about legal services, so I did wanna talk about this for a minute. So, when you look at legal services, it does look like it's going up in a normal percentage. And that's because it's being compared to the two thousand and fifteen budget. And when you look at what we've budgeted and what we've spent over the last few years, certainly, you think that we've underfunded, underfunded the budget line. And so, when we, we're looking at the budget for this year and thinking about making budget corrections on where we really should be budgeting the money appropriately, that's why it's up there at twenty-seven thousand dollars. Through five months this year, we've spent nine-thousand dollars in legal fees. So, if you were to extrapolate that over twelve months, it is about twenty-one thousand. But the first four months, the first few months of the year over the summer, no one's here. So, we don't have as many issues and not fully tapping into it as much. So, I think conservatively, twenty-seven thousand dollars is the right amount to have in that line. The other, the other question that came up that I wanted to speak to was about employee benefits. So, this is a contractual obligation that is in the teacher contract. So, as part of the teacher contract, if they participate in a 401-3B, we will match their deposit. We'll match their contributions a hundred and seventy-five dollars. The participation, as you can see, over time, has somewhat increased. This year, we actually exceeded the budget amounts, we have budgeted ten-thousand, six-fifty. We actually spent a little over twelve thousand, because the participation in 401-3Bs has gone out. So, the budget number that's in there for next year does assume a slight increase in participation in 3Bs and 401, or 401-3Bs. As, as Dr. Dory mentioned earlier, the biggest drivers of this budget were the COLA increases. A lot of, actually, not a lot, all of the personnel in this budget are not union members. So, it was a three percent, we used a three percent for any non-union on the contracted position throughout the budget, which, the basis between a two-and-a-half percent or a three percent, the difference is about sixteen thousand dollars if we were to readjust to a two-and-a-half percent. Obviously, I already spoke about the increase of legal, the decrease in grant writing. We did slightly decrease our supplies and reduce some, you know, dues and membership things that, that have changed over time. And I already spoke about the 401-3B. The biggest drivers here are the collective, hold on a minute, oh, I found, I went too far.
You went too far.
Yeah, this is the last one, look at that, last one. For tonight.
Great question, Julie. Mr. Robinson?
That was the reduction of fees.
Ms. Delai was a member of a few organizations that I...
No, NASC is still in there.
Yeah, no, NASC is still in there, no. She, as an assistant superintendent, they reduced for her to be part of NASF that I'm on in. And, and also, she was a member of the National Chapter of ASV, which I have enjoyed. A couple things.
Great, further questions, Julie?
I guess so.
It's welcome, Karen, thank you very much.
Oh, no, sorry, I had to find my page. So, you mentioned under the major administration initiatives, develop the system to measure performance and connect expenditures to performance measures? Do you mind saying a little more about that? I guess my flag is that I see performance measures and I, I worry that that has to do with test results and test results go up and improve and they're, and that suggests that money is well-spent or something like that, I just don't wanna see a linear relationship between them.
I, I don't necessarily interpret it that way, certainly, that's one way you could look at it. If we were to look at some data, if we are able to hire a K-eight math and literacy coach, and we do see improvement in our math scores, then we might be able to attribute some of the, the spending on those resources to that allocation resource, so it's some of that, certainly. But I guess I, I didn't necessarily see it as a one-for-one or a drug tie to that.
Mr. Robinson? I, I guess I, I just picked up on, I didn't see it in the narrative when I read it, increase in employee recruiting expense, can you explain what that is?
I think that's the school spring.
School spring.
School spring is our, the tool that we use if people apply, they apply online through school spring, and that's an increase in the...
And that's a budget driver?
It's an increase.
Increase.
It's, don't forget, this is the smallest cost center, sorry. Anything that goes up a little bit's a driver.
Seventeen bullet per slide, maybe, so we can do some of that.
Is that what, is that the under-hiring?
Well, the other thing that also has gone up in that human resources line in general is, is we have, we do have an increase in our expense for pre-placed...
Oh, the physicals too, yeah.
The, the town did hire a new town physician, they went with Quadrate, which is an agency up in... Beverly, and our cost control, that's a good one, but when you're hiring a hundred people, it goes up forty bucks, but...
I just saw Dr. Green's...
Yes.
Yes, we both did, yeah.
Martha, thank you again for being so welcome here, I appreciate it. Mrs. Webb?
Sorry, so you're saying that we changed our provider and the cost of the physicals for employees went up? Or the town decided?
The town changed the provider.
And I know we, Quadrate at work too, but that it basically went up forty dollars a physical?
Yes.
Yes. And was, we have no choice?
No, it's a town-driven decision.
This doesn't seem, I don't know.
It's a, we have, it's a town-driven decision. It's a, we have, it's a town-driven decision.
We're actually happy with Quadrate. The previous contractor is...
Well, were we, are we paying for, you know, were we not getting the services that we needed previously, and this is an increased cost, but we have...
Town-driven.
It was a town-driven decision.
I got the sense that it was a town-driven... If you want to sit back down.
Okay, we have the largest number of employees, so it may be town-driven, but we pay the biggest share then.
Thank you. So, the budget conversation continues Monday evening?
Yes, it does, and we'll be doing regular day and special day.
I'll be appearing nightly for...
Mr. Robinson?
We have some donations. Move to accept the donation, the amount of $1,000 from the Coolidge Science Laboratory and support group to be used to support the science teams, coaches, IT.
Is there a second? Is there a discussion? Great, seeing all those in favor of accepting? Are you opposed? Motion carries six zero.
Move to accept the donation, the amount of $2,500 from the Eastern Bank Charitable Foundation to be used to support the MLK Day celebration activities.
Is there a second? Second, and I know we're going to hear more?
No, absolutely.
Well, on Monday, right?
Oh, yeah. Questions? Great, all those in favor of accepting the donation? Opposed?
Oh, I was voting yes, sorry.
I know you were. Motion carries six zero, thank you very much. So, again, our next meeting is Monday evening, starting at 7:00. Your regular day budget, thank you everyone who stayed to the end.
Hung in there.
Of course, Mr. Robinson?
Procedural, are we going to have a night where we can talk about not, where we're going over a budget, or we could just have a philosophical...
Oh, absolutely. You, if you notice on the calendar...
I'm sorry.
So, the public hearing night, the public hearing usually is not a lengthy meeting, that piece, so that's an opportunity, then the following meeting you do as well. You actually have an extra meeting built in this year. We started on Thursday this year, last year we didn't start until lunch.
Any other questions before we move on? A adjourn for the evening?
Motion to adjourn?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? We're adjourned.